Happy to 2022, alright. Here's to a brand new year. I think we all can attest to the fact that we said that last year too. It is still a nice thing to get a new year going. So I welcome you to our, really it's a special school board meeting. It's called our organizational meeting. It's usually held the first Monday in January, but because of our winter break, we now have it on Tuesday. So today is Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. We're at 4:30, we're at the United Healthcare Building, which is really where, for those of you that'll watch this on our YouTube channel, we're really located up at the United Healthcare Facility on Rice Lake Road. And that's where our committee, the whole meetings and our committee meetings are, but our school board meetings are held at Denfeld High School. So, welcome, welcome to our guests tonight too. And with that, the very first thing is a call to order, which I've done. And then our first thing is our oath of office. And as we all know, we had an election this past November. And four, there are five school boards, six school board contenders for three, four slots on the board. And so tonight, we are welcoming the newly elected school board members. And Rosie Laffler Kemp is representing District One. And Rosie ran for election again and will start her third term with us. And so, we're blessed and lucky to have the experience. We have Member Kelly Eater, Darren Eater, who is representing our District Three.
At Large.
Oh, she is representing, she lives at our District Three. But she represents our At Large. And Kelly is starting her
You know, kind of
Two and a half, two and a half ago. I'm Jill Lofal, I represent District Four. And I am starting my second term, representing District Four. And we welcome Amber Zdowski as also an At Large position. And Amber is starting her first term on the Blue School Board. So, yay, congratulations. So we're going to rise and all of us have our oath of office. And so, let's just start and go right around this way. So, Member Laffler Kemp? Yep, you do it, yeah.
I, Rosie Laffler Kemp, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of member of the school board District Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
Right. I, Kelly Eater, do solemn What do I do? Oh, okay, here we go. I, Kelly Eater, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of member of the school board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
I, Jill Lofal, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of member of the school board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and my ability. So help me God.
I, Amber Zdowski, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of member of the school board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability. So help me God.
Welcome. Congratulations. And next, Clerk Oswald will take role. Member Eater?
Here.
Member Kirby?
Here.
Member Laffler Kemp?
Here.
Chair Lofal?
Here.
Governor, Acting Chair Lofal?
Here, yep. Member Oswald, let's see, I am here. Member Zdowski?
Here.
And Members Sandholm?
Here.
Superintendent Magus?
Here.
Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
Yes.
Redmond?
He is here.
That's you, right there.
Um, Deputy Clerk Erickson and Agent Barrett Severnards, do you hear them?
Oh, Severnards is here.
Oh, nevermind, sorry, you're here. Hi. I didn't see you. And then we have Secretary Bicat?
Here.
And that is all. We have more. Thank you. So our next is the approval of the agenda, as you see it. Is there any questions or additions? Superintendent Magus, anything that is on there? Okay. So I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
Second.
Um, Member Laffler Kemp is the approval of our agenda. And, um, Member Sandholm is our second. So our approval of our agenda is seven zero. Our first order of business. Oh, did we vote? Um, is all of us in favor of the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going on to number five. Before we get into elections, just a clarification, because I had some questions back and forth. And Executive Secretary Bicat reached out to the manual for organizational meetings. And we vote on these positions by roll call. Um, we have at times voted by a paper ballot, like maybe before when we were voting on our superintendent. But for this, it is a roll call vote. So, Member Oswald will have a lot of meaning to do. Our first election is the Chair of our Board, the Chairperson of the Board. Do I have a nomination for Chair of the Board?
I nominate Jill Lofal for Chair of the Board.
I'll second it. You don't need to second.
Oh. But thank you.
You'd be the second in.
And I will, I will accept that nomination. Are there other nominations for Chair of the Board? Are there other nominations for the Chair of the Board? Are there other nominations for Board Chair? Seeing none, our 2022 Board Chair is Jill Lofal by acclamation. So thank you. Our next, we need a Our next, um, item on our agenda is the election of our Clerk. Do I have a nomination for Clerk? Um, okay, oh, Vice Chair. So, uh, number six is the election of the Vice Chair. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair of our Board?
I will nominate Rosie Laffler Kemp. I will second. Oh, but there's no second. No second. We did
Member Laffler Kemp is, will you accept that nomination? Yes. Are there other nominations for Vice Chair? Are there other nominations for Vice Chair? Are there other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing no other nominations. Um, it is by acclamation that Rosie, Member Laffler Kemp, is our Vice Chair for the 2022 season. Now, we're going to get to the election of Clerk. Is there a nomination for the election of Clerk?
I will nominate Alana Oswald.
Member Oswald, do you accept that nomination? Yeah. Are there other nominations for Clerk? Other nominations for Clerk?
I'll nominate, uh,
This girl sitting next to you.
Member Eater, do you accept that nomination?
I will gladly, thank you, we remember Kirby, but I will gladly withdraw and retire. Never.
So seeing no other nominations, by acclamation, Member Oswald is our Clerk for the 2022. Next is our election of Treasurer. Do I have a nomination for the Office of Treasurer? Do I have a nomination for that sizzling, you know, nomination of Treasurer? Member Sandholm?
I'd like to nominate Deputy Clerk Eater.
Member Derek Eater? Um, do you accept the role of Treasurer?
Thank you, Member Sandholm.
Is there any other nomination for Treasurer? Any other nomination for Treasurer? Any other nomination for Treasurer? Seeing none, Member Derek Eater is our 2022 appointment of our Deputy Clerk. Our appointment of Board Secretaries? Is that a resolution? With Oswald?
Excuse me?
I'm gonna turn on my motions.
Is there a difference between Treasurer and Deputy Clerk?
Oh, yes. Oh, I said Deputy Clerk and I meant election of Treasurer. I must be nervous. I'm nervous.
You have never been nervous.
I know.
Or, or, then I, you're doing
But it's a big, it's a celebration. I want to say, you know, good job, you guys. But, so, um, Member Eater is our Treasurer. And then now, we're going to appoint the Deputy Clerk. And our Deputy Clerk is, usually it is, you know, CFO Erickson. And so, just by
So, should I make a motion that we appoint CFO Erickson our Deputy Clerk? Is that correct?
It does say appointment, so that might
Yeah.
Yep. Well, I made that motion. Second. Second.
It's been moved in seconded to make CFO Kathy Erickson our Deputy Clerk. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Apologize.
Opposed? Then we have appointed CFO Erickson our Deputy Clerk. Our number ten on our agenda is the appointment of Board Secretaries. At this time, I make a motion to accept Executive Secretary Patty Bicat as one of our Board Secretaries. I think our second Board Secretary is, will be appointed at a later date. So I make the motion for Executive Secretary Patty Bicat to become a Board Secretary.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The appointment of Executive Secretary Bicat. Thank you very much, Executive Secretary Bicat back there. Thank you, Nance. We have a number of things on our consent agenda. And the fact that it's placed on our consent agenda, right? We're going on the right direction, I think, okay. Now our little gunshots, okay? Looking at it. So our consent agenda has all these resolutions. So can we just make a motion to accept our consent agenda and not read all these resolutions?
I, I, I believe in the past, we haven't read all of them. Part of it, but we haven't had it presented in public.
Yeah, we haven't. Um, I would imagine what you could do too is, you could, you could pull whatever resolution we feel we should discuss. Or, we could go through every resolution. I'm ready to do that. Member Laffler Kemp?
I think sometimes reading them aloud is much of a education for the public as well, particularly, you know, some of them I see on here or our official newspaper or things like that.
Yep.
But our, our select, you know, reading times and dates, so.
Okay.
I agree with that. I think we have read them all in the past.
I think we have.
On my term on the board, so we should probably continue that practice.
Okay. So I got them. So our first resolution is the selection of meeting dates and times. Um, yeah. Member Sandholm, will you read that resolution?
Selection of meeting dates and times, Resolution B-1223859. It is resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the regular meetings of the School Board shall be held the third Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM at Denfeld Media Center, unless otherwise scheduled by the School Board. It is further resolved that if the regular meeting is canceled and cannot be held on the regular scheduled date listed above, due to weather or unforeseen circumstances, it will be held the very next day at the same time and location.
Is there a second to this resolution?
Second.
Member Kirby, is the second to resolution on the selection of meeting times, dates and times? Any, any question, concern?
I do. Uh, I know we talked about this last year, but when can we have the discussion about maybe leaving the month of July open a little bit for staff to give them a little bit of a break that month of July? And then maybe look to see where Christmas falls. And if the school board leaving the Christmas, maybe we can do some adjustment around those two things. So would that have to be something we decide now? Or can we take a look at that at a different time?
I'd like to just share from my perspective that I think it would be an agenda item in our, we did the whole meeting. And, um, we have pretty, we have set that agenda for this next week or for this Thursday. So maybe in February, we can
Okay.
look at where those dates fall and have a conversation.
So we'll just talk about it because the agenda said in February.
Right.
Great.
Member Laffler Kemp, did you have a
No, it's, my comments probably would be at the end of the discussion portion and wanting information that we want to make that decision.
Okay. I do appreciate the, due to weather or unforeseen circumstances, it will be held the very next day at the same time and location. And I think we've learned that through some of our MSBA organizational meetings and workshops. And the fact that if we do it that way and there's a snowstorm, we don't have to wait for that three-day posting to then gather again. And that can make a big difference if there's an important vote that needs to be done for timeline in construction or in processing or hiring. So, um, so thank you, Member, Member Magus, Superintendent Magus.
Sure. And I think that when we post, if I remember correctly, we have to post it, post that in the posting which time too.
Yes. So all in favor, all in favor of this resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution carries. Our next resolution is a designation of depositories and acceptance of collateral. It's a rather long one. I think you can get by with reading the two, the three resolved and, and the listing of the banks. I think we can just peruse at our time. So do I have someone that will make this resolution?
I can.
Okay. Are we just going to go around the?
Yeah.
Okay. Good deal.
Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that Harbor Point Credit Union, North Shore Bank of Commerce, BMO Harris Bank, US Bank, Key Bank, Wells Fargo, Park State Bank, and Western Bank shall be depositaries of the funds of this school district for up to a one-year period commencing January 1st, 2022. And said banks shall be required to deposit with said district collateral securities subject to approval by the School Board and kept in trust. Resolved that the collateral securities pledged by Harbor Point Credit Union and placed in a trust at Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, North Shore Bank of Commerce, and placed in trust at US Bank, and Key Bank, and placed in trust at Federal Reserve Bank of Boston, all as provided by law and evidence by trust agreements executed by the Treasurer of the School Board, an Officer of the Depository Bank, and acknowledged by an Officer of the Bank holding the securities in trust shall be approved. And then, do you want me to read the banks again?
No, I think you can just drop down to the re-?
Oh, sure.
Or to the
Yeah. Resolved that the Treasurer, Clerk, and/or CFO, Executive Director of Business Services, shall be authorized to arrange for the exchange, release, or placing of additional collateral, provided that in all instances such exchange, releases, or placing of additional collateral shall be approved by the School Board and all new collateral shall be placed in trust with the respective aforementioned institutions.
And is there a second to Resolution B-1-22-3860?
Second.
Member Eater, seconds the resolution? All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next resolution is, um, I move, I move Resolution B-1-22-3861. It's a resolution to designate of authority to perform electronic fund transfers, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the CFO, Executive Director of Business Services has the authority to designate a district employee to initiate electronic fund transfers as required by Minnesota Statute 471.38. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Member Sandholm, seconds? Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Want to take your turn or are you busy?
I can do it.
Resolution, authorization to the Superintendent of Schools and the CFO, Executive Director of Business Services, to sign contracts and grants. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that to increase operational efficiency, it is requested that authorization to sign expenditure contracts for the lease, purchase, and contract for goods or services within budgetary and policy limits up to $100,000 be granted to the Superintendent of Schools and CFOs, Executive Directors of Business Services. This delegation, delegation of authorization is allowable under Minnesota Statute 123B dot 52 subdivision 2. The superintendents designated will review each contract before the execution. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the Superintendent of Schools or in his or her absence, the CFO, Executive Director of Business Services be designated legal authorized representative to sign applications and execute grant documents for and on behalf of the school district in connection with federal and state laws and funding authorities and local public and private funding agencies that offer categorical financial support to this school district. Resolved by the School Board of ISD 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that a list of all the above contracts and grants hereby approved by the Superintendent and/or CFO, Executive Director of Business Services will be provided as an informational item at the first possible regular School Board meeting following the approval action. I move Resolution B-1-22-3862.
Is there a second?
There's a
Member Zdowski, seconds? Any questions, discussion on this resolution? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next resolution is the selection of District Legal Counsel, Member Eater.
Um, Resolution B-1-22-3863, selection of the District Legal Counsel.
Legal Counsel.
Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the following firms have been selected as legal counsel for the district. Breiburger, Buchanan, Smith &amp; Frederick, P.A., Dryer, Peterson, McNusson, formerly known as Dryer &amp; Oberom, Ratwick, Ross, Stack, and Maloney, and then Ruff, Anderson, Squiers, and Walzburger. Did I say that right? P.A. Resolved that the authorized, authorized contact person for the district are as well. Um, Chair of the School Board, Superintendent of Schools, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Executive Assistant to the Assistant Superintendent, CFO, Executive Director of Business Services, Executive Assistant to the CFO, Executive Director of Business Services, Director of Special Education, Manager of Facilities, Finance Manager, Director of Human Resources, Human Resources Manager for Certified Staff, Human Resource Manager for Non-Certified Staff, and Human Resource Benefits Support Manager. Um, Resolution B-1-22-3863.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Laffler Kemp, seconds? Are there any discussion, questions? Seeing none? All those in favor of this resolution on the selection of our District's Legal Counsel, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next resolution is our selection of District's Official Newspaper. Member Kirby?
This is Resolution B-1223864. Uh, resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the District's Official Newspaper will continue to be the
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Sandholm is a second to this resolution? Are there any questions, discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of moving the selection of District's Official Newspaper, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next motion is the acceptance of eleven tools of civility. Member Laffler?
Thank you. Resolution B-1223865. Whereas the residents of the Blue Public Schools ISD 709 place a high value on respect and civility in their lives. And they understand that these characteristics are essential to any healthy community. And whereas the School Board of Independent School District 709 supports opportunities for civil discourse and discussion in the community within the school district. And whereas the School Board of Independent School District 709 addresses sometimes controversial issues such as which people often feel passionately and which at times leads to uncivil behavior. And whereas an atmosphere of incivility and disrespect can have a damaging effect on the proceedings, on the quality of debate, and on the practice of democracy itself. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 709 recognizes eleven tools of civility as encouraged by the Speaker piece, the Civility Project, that will provide increased opportunities for civil discourse in order to find positive resolutions to the issues that face our community. These tools include: one, pay attention; two, listen; three, be inclusive; four, no gossip; five, show respect; six, be agreeable; seven, apologize; eight, give constructive criticism; nine, take responsibility; and be honest and fair for others; love and show your evidence, share your reasoning. Be it resolved that the School District Board of Independent School District 709 shall promote the use and adherence of these tools in conducting the business of the School Board.
Do I have a second to this resolution?
Second.
Member Eater, seconds? Our approval of the tools of civility? Any questions? Concerns? Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of this resolu- resolution, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going back to Member Sandholm with the, um, resolution of participation of school, student School Board members.
Um, Resolution B-1223866. Resolution approving the continued participation of student School Board representatives. Whereas, the School Board of Blue Public Schools ISD 709 has included school board represented, representative since 2005. And whereas, student School Board representatives provided the school board with a student voice and youth perspective. And whereas, the Minnesota School Boards Association encourages school boards to develop a process to include student representatives. And whereas, the superintendent and high school principals have reviewed and revised where necessary the selection process for appointing student School Board representatives. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 709 approves the continued participation of one student School Board representative, each from Denfeld High School, the New East High School, and the Area Learning Center. Be it further resolved that the term of the 2022 student School Board representatives will be January 4th, 2022 to December 31st, 2022. I move Resolution B-1223866.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Laffler Kemp, if there's a second? Any discussion? Member Laffler?
Yeah, I do, I do. Uh, I, I think, I, I just wanted to add, we do have a representative from Denfeld and the New East. And he did add a couple of years ago, the Area Learning Center. But, uh, the principal has, uh, won't ask and will decline having a representative. And so, I just, for a number of reasons that have been shared with us in the past. But I guess I just asked that, we asked the principal again. In fact, again, I, I, uh,
In fact, again, I, I, uh, but, um, we also appreciated the rationale that they gave to us on at that time of years ago in terms of, um, why they did not help.
But I guess I've heard that they've struggled to give candidates willing to participate and to do it out of the Area Learning Center, and, and I think what we want to make sure, we continue to encourage active participation or that they, they seek a candidate, even if that candidate's only available for a handful of meetings, it would still be great to have that perspective on the board.
I, when, um, I made this addition to the, or when I requested this addition, that was approved of this motion, um, my intent was to have somebody, it didn't, doesn't have to be the same person everyone, meaning the transient nature of, of the programs, I might need a board, you know, like every month somebody, you know, somebody is a drawing, I don't know. It could be anything, and with the new leadership with ALC, I think, um, Mr. Goldblatt can, can come up with something on the study, if, you know, the opportunity, he probably doesn't know this, but.
And I actually have already reached out to make sure that, that we further encourage that because I think it is valuable to have all just put together.
You know, and I agree with that, I, you know, I do want to remind the board, we actually have a school board. Uh, school board policy, you know, this can happen, there are like a, a job description that could well, so there, there is a process that we pull on both of the other high schools to go through. And so we want to make sure when we make that extension that they get that same information.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And that even.
I was just gonna say, when I sent the invite to Denfeld, that he said, will they all see, because I don't look right in. So, um, Mr. Goldblatt, did, received all the same information that everyone is regarding electing student representatives. I just, I had probably one question.
Well, I, I think if, if, um, they need an accommodation, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this resolution, it's been moved and separated, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're on our last resolution, it's, um, Columbus Day.
Um, eleven point one, resolution B one two-two dash three-eight six-seven, Columbus Day. Be it resolved that pursuant to M S six-four five point four-four subdivision of the School Board of Independent School District Number Seven Oh Nine has determined that Columbus Day is not a legal holiday regarding conducting public school business.
Is there a second? Second? Member Sandholm with a second? Any discussion, questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we got through all the resolutions, and if you look at your agenda, um, it's really just number twelve and it's committee appointments discussion, and I don't know if it's a discussion, it's just a reminder that we have this handout and if you can make sure I get it tonight, that makes, um, making these appointments really smooth. And I'll call you if I have questions or if there's some, some, you know, some things I need for your input. Um, I certainly will reach out later tonight than tomorrow. One of the things I just want to note because it, it caught us last year a little bit, but it, it worked out just fine last year too, is that our Quality Steering Labor Management, um, currently, member Kirby and member Oswald serve on that, and that meets, uh, the, usually on Thursday, and it's, it is this Thursday. So as you look at, at that selection of that committee, if that's something you're interested in, and it meets Thursday mornings, it meets this Thursday, January sixth. I don't know. Member, member Paquette reached out to, uh, President Fisher, um, intentionally, but we, we could be wrong. Member Kirby, do you, do you think you know, are we, is it not this Thursday?
It is this Thursday.
No, it, there is this Thursday, but, but instead, um, I think it's Q L T is this Thursday, not Q S C.
Q S C is this Thursday.
Is it?
Unless it's Quality Steering Leader, is it, Q S C?
Q S C is this Thursday.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry, it isn't.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good.
They're just, they're, they also let you do the Q L T meetings, all of them, and so it's multiple.
Is Q L T a scheduled committee? Have we added that?
But it's the same.
Okay.
The, the Q L Ts flow into the Q S.
Yeah, I got it. So that's that, that's number twelve, member Lafferty.
Yeah, I, I just want to add to that, you know, as I was filling mine out, um, I, I put a lot was served as needed. I, I, I have certain capital lines that I feel I can commit to, the time to, and, um, uh, and I'm interested in, but, um, I guess one of the things I, I just like to make sure, you know, we all, all know is that we all play a role with doing the work of the board, and these committees are the work of the board. And so I just want to appreciate all of the board members that choose to serve and, and on, on one or two committees, recognizing that everyone can serve on, might, might be able to serve on many, but, um, it, it really helps. Uh, we all see this as the work of all of us of the board, so, um, thank you ahead of time for filling it out and for helping us, you know, serve the community and, and having all of us being represented in different ways.
Thank you. Other comments? This is a two-page, um, handout, so it would really help if you put your name on both, both pages so that if I grab it or if it's given to me and, and I don't, it's separated, that your name is on both of them. And I just want to reinforce that, member Lafferty, you know, you're right, I have a lot of trees because I'll serve wherever there's a, a place that needs a body, but not, I mean, a good body. And then I have very few ones and twos because it's not going to help anybody if all of theirs are ones. I need to really, um, see what's your top priority, so I would expect maybe a couple of ones, um, and maybe a couple of twos, or maybe just one, and, you know, but then, that, that also helps, um, when looking, because there'll be a lot of us that have the same ones and twos as well, we're, but we're, we're not a good board and, and enjoy the leadership, so thank you. Any other questions about that? The next item is thirteen, committed the whole discussion, time and location, I think. We put that on just so that we are, again, reminded that it's kind of out of sync, but this Thursday, there is a conflict with using Denfeld's media center, so we are at East and we are in the media center. So we're in the East Media Center, it starts at four-thirty, that's the policy committee. So again, it's so important for us to get these committees done tonight, um, and so that if you're, whatever committee you're on, and then we do have a committee of the whole meeting that follows the policy. And I think, and that's on the second floor. Superintendent Eater.
Sure. Uh, just a note related to, uh, the vaccine mandates, uh, that have come out from the, you know, federal government. They're, from what I understand, the, the case is going before the Supreme Court on Friday, and there may be a need for us to enact a policy quickly related to it. We are going to be, uh, in the policy committee taking a look at some of the modeled MSBA, uh, policy again. But should the court decision change the direction that we need to go on Friday, we may be required to, uh, look at having a policy committee soon afterwards just because of the, uh, the, the nature and timeline of, of that, that, uh, that policy and mandate from the federal government. Just as a formative piece.
Yeah. Thanks for that heads up, I think we all got MSBA, uh, emails about the Supreme Court meeting. I thought, I guess I, I thought it was yesterday that they were, did they meet yesterday and now they, they have more meetings on this Friday?
But it's on Friday.
Yeah, but I, I really appreciate MSBA by already coming out with some policy suggestions, doesn't it? And that we gave us a heads up about policy meeting, um, could be a, a good committee to be on, it's you going, Rosie. I remember Lafferty.
Yeah, I, I had one other question, um, that I, I know on some of these committees you can have at least two or three, I would say, I think, the committee of the public, right, is that?
No, that's just one.
Okay, and you can, can I put you? Yeah, I thought we had two in the past, but not when Alana, you were coming there, yes, and there was two on.
And in order for you to get that information, you'd have to have looked at the other handout that, um, Executive Secretary sent out. Um, we just limited it to one line, so you're not confused that you have to put anything other than. I, I, I have the document too that shows what ones have one, some have three, intergovernmental has three. Do you want to, do you want to, do you have that, Patty? Could you pull that up real quick and just remind us, and if you want to put that by your comment, you could do that?
Just might be helpful if you care, I have a big board member, you know, even though that was sent out and as a reminder that this is scheduled.
As Patty's looking for that, is there any other questions or concerns? You can hand these, um, committee assignments to, um, Executive Secretary Paquette on, on your way out. If you've got to stay a little bit and, and work on it, that's, that's good, I'm going to stay, um, as well. Do you know which one I'm, I'm thinking of? It's just the one that has our appointments from last year, that would be very easy to kind of pull up. And of course, I think on the, I think on the directions, every one of these has an alternate. So the Parks and Recs has, um, one appointment and then there's an alternate, and, um, so again, I, I certainly, um, think you can put up four. Um, if, you know, there isn't, you know, if there's just, um, you don't have, you know, it says that the committee conflicts with your schedule, but the committee just might conflict, period. Just might not be what you want to commit to, because if you put threes, that might very well make you an alternate to a committee, you'd say, I would rather have put four.
Do you want to give this read, how many members are you?
Yep, 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 and you can make that note if you want to on your sheet or.
So for, um, well, Committee of the Ball is all board members.
Right.
Human resource, um, finance, I have another committee on that. Policy committee is three. City of the District of Parks and the Rec Board is one, Human Action is one.
What is that?
Human Action is one.
Well, that one is really not appointed at all, Kelly Eater is currently serving, so keep going.
Uh, District Wellness is one, the New Public Schools Association is one. Education Equity is one, that's an alternate, so it's two. Head Start is one, Intergovernmental is three, Quality Steering Labor Management is one.
It's actually two?
Oh, it's a two.
Yep.
Okay. Um, Regent Seven Double A is one. Special Services Parenthood Victory is one, Transfer Field is one, Transportation Hazard Committee is one. And then we have added, um, the federal programs, and that one I believe is one as well.
Any other questions or concerns? Going down to our agenda number fourteen. Any questions or other business? Superintendent Eater.
I just have a comment, and just wanted to say how appreciative, I, and I mentioned at the, at the closing in our last board, how appreciative I was of, of that group, but I just, again, want to reiterate how much I appreciate the, the time and dedication that each of you show as representatives of the community and how they lead the district, and I think that especially now in, in the challenging times that we've had over the course of the past, uh, year and a half, it's, it's doubly appreciated by myself and our, our administrative team. Happy to have, uh, you with us, Mr. Zabowski, and also appreciative of, of the leadership shown by the, the, uh, positions within the board as well as the positions within committee assignment. It's, uh, greatly appreciated by myself, the administration, our school staff.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Again, welcome to twenty-twenty-two and, um, the year ahead. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
I looked at member, member Sandholm, but it wasn't, I heard member Lafferty. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our organizational meetings had.